My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those people on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call, public invited to be heard, or on any of the public hearing items this evening. So now we have the minutes of August 9th, 2009. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wanted to know, the minutes don't indicate the level of the survey we asked for for Windy Gap. I'd like to add that the consensus was around the 3,000, the 3,000 level for the statistically valid mail survey.
Okay.
And with that change, I'd move the minutes.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, let's vote. And that passes, well, we're still waiting for one vote. That passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Finley absent. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, we need to pull item 8F, the Resolution 2016-85. That'll come back on the 13th. There are some changes that need to be made to that.
Okay. So, report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, Council.
All right, so now we're on to special reports. A proclamation designating August 23rd, 2016 as welcome students from, I gotta get this pronunciation right, Zhoujiangshu Language School in China Day in Longmont, Colorado. Carrie Adams, the program director from Silver Creek is here, along with Eric Finnstedt, principal of Silver Creek High School, and the assistant principal of Zhoujiangshu Language School. So you guys all want to come down? And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating August 23rd, 2016 as welcome students from Zhoujiangshu Language School in China Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas the students at Silver Creek High School in St. Vrain Valley School District have the opportunity to study and learn the Mandarin language, and whereas Silver Creek Leadership Academy aims to promote global citizenship and cultural intelligence among students, and to encourage and foster the advancement of international understanding, goodwill, and peace through learning about different cultures, and whereas students and staff from Zhoujiangshu International Language School in Zhouxi Province of China are visiting Longmont, Colorado, and whereas we hope to build a friendly relationship between these two schools and communities, and whereas the city of Longmont wishes to officially welcome and recognize the presence of those distinguished visitors from China. Now therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, mayor by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim August 23rd, 2016 as welcome students from Zhoujiangshu Language School in China Day in Longmont, and invite all to help welcome our guests from China. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Carrie Adams, and I am the program director at Silver Creek Leadership Academy. And I would like to introduce the teacher that we've brought with us. Her name is Becky, and she has a few words for you. Becky.
Dear Mr. Mayor Coombs and the city council, good evening. We are very glad that we have this opportunity to come to your beautiful city. On behalf of the teachers and students from Zhoujiang Foreign Language School, I appreciate your hospitality, and the Mr. Fitness Day of Silver Creek High School, and the staff and the host families here, they provide us with the greatest reception and accommodation. So, and today, Mr. Adam gave us a tour guide around your city. We went to the police department, the library, file department. The beautiful city gave us a deep, a good impression. And our city, Zhoujiang, is also a beautiful city with mountains around in China. So we hope our friendship will become stronger and stronger as we continuously conduct exchange activities and cooperation. Now I'd like to introduce my school, Zhoujiang Foreign Language School, to you. My school was built in 1971. The school covers total area of over 80,000 square meters, and it has over 300 staff and more than 4,000 students. The school has established a friendly relationship and cooperation between schools and educational institution for over 10 countries, has hired over 50 foreign teachers to teach foreign languages so far, has opened German, Japanese, French, Russian, and Korean, and some other elective courses, and has received students from over 20 countries to study Chinese language, and has sent over 50 teachers abroad to exchange visits. Each summer, the school will select a number of teachers and students to go abroad for exchange. This year, luckily, we have had this opportunity, we came here. So the teachers and students of the school have toured extensively around, all over the world, and to share the outstanding achievements of Chinese culture. As you know, we come from far away China. We have a different culture from yours, and we hope all of you can come to our city to have a visit, to experience Chinese culture, and of course, welcome you to my school, Zhoujiang Foreign Language School, and at that time, you would receive a warm reception. Finally, we wish you all good health and a great time. Thank you. Now, thank you. This is my vice principal, Mr. Liu. He'd like to, on behalf of my school, to give some gifts to your city. Okay? Yeah, this is a book about our school. Okay? Yeah, all of our activities are inside. We have all the activities, and the teachers, students, all activities inside. So we hope you can like our city, yes, and our school. And this is a video about all the activities of our school. Yeah, we have all kinds of foreign exchange. We have foreign students living and studying in my school. So all of these are inside this. Hope you are interested in it, okay? Yeah, and this is traditional Chinese paper carting. Okay, altogether, there are 12 animals, yeah, in it. Hope you can enjoy it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we maybe all leave in the center and take a picture?
Yeah. Okay.
Is there the camera right over there?
Is it one of these? No, sorry. How do I use it? It's minimized.
Well, next we gotta do the pre-.
Just pull the jumper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you do slideshow?
Well, next, Wendy Naffsinger, Longmont Economic Development Partnership Vice President, is here to present the results of the LEDP Annual Existing Business Survey.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, members of city council. I'm gonna start on this, and then my partner, Janine Lettingham, will come up and talk about the local business part of this. So, as you know, the Longmont Economic Development Partnership has been, oops, I don't know how to, is this it? Okay. Has been conducting surveys of our existing businesses for over 26 years. This is our 26th year of surveying businesses. This is our first year that we've included local businesses. Normally, obviously, we just do the primary employers. Now this year, we're doing local business, as we've taken those services over from the city. We have 35 volunteers, and I'd like to tout on them a little bit. We have a few of them here in the audience that'll be recognized later, but our volunteer committee is nationally recognized with their efforts. Most people, most communities that do these surveys have to do, have to have a staff person with them to do these surveys. We have a very trusted group of volunteers that do this on our behalf, and we very much appreciate them, because with a small staff, we wouldn't be able to do the work that they get done, so we'd like to thank them. So, on the primary industry side, 200 companies were contacted. 117 of those completed the survey, 59%. Of those 200 companies, 77% of them were in the advanced technology realm. 75% of them had less than 50 employees. So if you talk about small business, I think the national small business market is 500 employees or less, so most all of our businesses in Longmont would be small. But for primary employers, most of our primary employers are also considered small business. So 75% of the respondents were less than 50 employees. 47% of those have been in business for over 25 years. And the anticipated growth, oh, let me backtrack, I apologize. I wanted to let you know, of the total primary jobs in Longmont is about 1,100, 11,500 jobs. So, oops, it went away already. I don't know what happened. I didn't do anything. I'll keep talking while he's fixing that. So, of the, of the people that responded, 59%, 7,000 jobs were represented in these respondents. So, a good survey, good survey numbers. I would also tell you that the anticipated growth for these companies is in the advanced tech sector, and I would also like to note that advanced tech is different than it used to be. Manufacturing used to not be advanced technology, but with the new, the new technology of everything, most of our manufacturers in Longmont are in the advanced technology sector because of the process they're using to make their products. They also noted that we had, they had over 200 jobs open and available for employees right now. Some other highlights, 88% of these companies anticipate new products in the next two years. That's up from 81% last year, so we continue to see a growth, growth pattern for our companies. 70% say their sales are increasing. 94% of them say the technology infrastructure is adequate. I would note that internet speed and access were noted as the top, increasing utility, not unusual. Next slide mentioned very frequently, very happy, the business is very happy with the next slide services. Over half of the companies that were, that were surveyed have expansion plans in the next three years, which total an estimated 710 new jobs, 111,900,000 in capital investment. And that number doesn't specify building versus land or equipment. 51% of the companies that we surveyed have adequate room for growth at their existing facility. 417,000 square feet projected new needs from our existing employers. That's up from 358,000 last year. And I will talk about, I will talk about that further in the next slide. Community strengths, workforce. Workforce is our number one community strength, as everyone knows. Location. Location mostly noted was distance to DIA, so proximity to DIA, a central location in the metro area, and easy access to the metro area. That's what location meant, that was our second highest strength. Third was positive business climate, which includes a lot of different things. Some of the community weaknesses that were noticed, that were noted were transportation, mostly in trains, traffic, and public transportation. RTD continues to be a challenge for the community, for the businesses in the community. Traffic, they mostly were talking about the construction, which is pro and con. We obviously need the construction to forward our community. So the growth barriers that were mentioned the most were building and land availability. Any of you that have talked to me in the last year who have heard this, I've been hammering at it. We have a lot of, we have inventory in Longmont, but the inventory that we have is not necessarily the product that the companies are looking for. That inventory continues to dwindle, so we are working very closely with the development community, community, both in Longmont and outside Longmont, to try to get the inventory built that we need for our communities to be able to grow and expand here. Then, the growth barrier is workforce availability. So while workforce is our number one community strength, it also is a barrier, and most of those jobs that are noted on the workforce are in specific technical skills. That's the availability that were noted. Some other growth barriers that were mentioned, just, just was high cost of living, which is relative, obviously, to where you live, and cost of doing business, but most of that, almost all of that was related to Boulder County taxes. So, we started what we've always done, one of the things we've always done is follow-up with these, with these companies. This year, we had 69 companies that requested follow-up assistance, whether it be, and that, those, I'm sorry, I want to note that those 69, of those 69 companies, that includes local businesses, which Janine will address in a moment. So those, those inquiries are for, can be anything for further next slide service, for I need to expand my business, for I'm having an issue with this, I'm having an issue with that. 26 of the 69 companies were direct, were directly responded to by city staff. Sean, Harold and Sean, on behalf of the city, have made a commitment that every company that comes in with an issue, or a comment, or a concern with the city, that they will be, they are to be notified. I work with Sean on that. He is notified, and the direct response comes from city. Either Sean himself, or the appropriate city staff, so that all matters can be addressed. Couple of instances where that, where that, the details on that, mostly are a lot of more next slide. Like I said, Chuck Finleyon is just a blessing for us, because he responds to all the companies right away. He's very good at that, and he answers the questions that need to be met. Trafficking and parking concerns, there was a company in town that was having some parking concerns in front of their building. Sean reached out to them. They had talked to the city before, but those city parking engineers went back out to the company, talked to them again. So those are some of the things. Building and landscape regulations, again, we reached out, the city reached out to that company that was having some issues, and took care of the issue. Enterprise-owned information was also of high need for companies as follow-up, obviously, as that's a new program to the companies this year. And then we, we offer expansion assistance to anyone, so we follow up with all the companies on, on their needs as pertains to this survey. That's what I have. I am going to turn this over to Janine, and if there's any questions, we can do that afterwards.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, city council. Janine Lettingham, Director of Local Business and Startup Community Development for the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. So as Wendy mentioned, this is the first year that economic development has conducted onsite interviews with local business. So what we sought to do was a pilot program in 2016, and we thought we would leverage the already great existing business survey team to do that. So we asked for volunteers from the survey team to assist us with that, and we had 11 team members who volunteered to do local business surveys, as well as primary surveys. So I want to thank that team very much for taking that on. In Longmont, it's estimated that there are about 3,000 local businesses in the area. We utilize a database called Economic Modeling Specialists International, EMSI. According to EMSI, while there's about 11,000 primary jobs, there are about 41,000 local business, public sector, and private, and nonprofit jobs in Longmont. So in the first half of 2016 alone, 936 jobs were reported being created by this local business sector. So we sought a pilot project targeting 60 businesses. We looked for businesses located throughout the city, representing different service sectors, to do this, this initial pilot with. We got a response rate of 31 surveys that were completed, or 52% of those, 14% were mailed. So we mailed, we ended up having to mail over half the surveys to local businesses, and I'll talk about that a little more. The total jobs reported by those responding were 609 jobs. About 55% of those jobs are full-time jobs. So as we go through this report, I want to emphasize that this is not a statistically valid sample. In order for the sample to be statistically valid, and for us to make broad assumptions about local businesses, we would need about 300 respondent businesses. So bearing that in mind. With this survey, we sought to first test and assess the effectiveness of using the existing business survey team to do these surveys. We also wanted to refine our tool. We developed this tool at the Economic Development Council or Partnership, looking at various surveys, sort of benchmarking surveys out there. We wanted to gain a better understanding of local business needs, and how local business felt about doing business in Longmont, and also their awareness of our services and our partner services. So the results of our survey, what we learned is that it is quite difficult to get in for meetings with local businesses. They're just human resource-strapped, very busy in their businesses, so we need to explore different ways to reach out to local businesses to get these surveys completed. We formed a local business advisory team, which many of you met with this week, great meeting, who are already working on this and thinking through different ways to reach out to local business. We also learned, not surprisingly, that we have to further refine our tool, shorten it a bit. What we learned in terms of our respondents was that these were largely, in this particular sample size, they were largely mature businesses. They'd been in business for, on average, 14 years in the city of Longmont, which is saying something, since 60% of small businesses fail within the first five years of being in business. So these owners were still highly involved in day-to-day operations. Most of them live and work in Longmont. Their, their gross sales, 65% reported gross sales of 500,000 or more. Only 4% reported revenues of 100,000 or under, and most of those businesses had been in business less than two years. So very healthy revenues, and they all reported, or these businesses mostly reported that they had stable or increasing sales. They reported that they were profitable. 16% reported breaking even, the rest are profitable. So that's good news. And we had a strong representation of minority and veteran businesses in this sample, and that was by design. So, sorry, this chart is a little hard to see from far away. I just wanted to graphically show you what our respondents look like. So we had, as you can see over on the right side of the slide, we had a great, well-rounded representation of local businesses, and in terms of business sectors. Again, the, the gross sales breakdown, you can take a look at that. 68% again, had been in business five years or longer. You can see that 27% had been in business two years or less. And in terms of company size, we had a very healthy portion of businesses with over 20 employees. So about, over a quarter had 20 or more employees. 33% had under five employees. I want to mention as well that these are all brick and mortar businesses. We did not take on home-based businesses for this pilot. 20% were minority-owned, and 10% were veteran-owned. I want to clarify that, again, that we are in no means implying that 20% of businesses in Longmont are minority-owned, nor 10% veteran-owned. That was just this particular sample. 60% lease their space, 40% own. Of those that were surveyed, nearly half are planning some kind of renovation and expansion in the next three years, and they reported $2.7 million in planned capital investment. We had very few that gave us investment numbers, so this number is highly underrepresented or low. They, business, local businesses generally have a very positive attitude about doing business in Longmont. Some of their, our strengths from their eyes were that we have strong growth here. We have a very positive pro-business climate. Public utility services were very highly rated, and also police protection services. Of the few that did report some challenges or negatives, constant road construction was one that, not surprisingly, came to light, and a lack of retail clothing was the other one. Nearly half, or 48% of these businesses are struggling to find qualified local workforce, and less than half of them rated worker quality as high. However, we asked them what kinds of jobs they're, they were specifically referring to, and most of these positions are customer-facing type positions that require little or no previous training. I think what we're seeing is... I think what we're seeing is, based on other responses that they gave, that a lack of affordable housing is coming into play, that as we get more local businesses, particularly in the restaurant sector, there is competition for that labor. So, I think that's where that's coming from. What, what we heard too is, these businesses reported forty-five unfilled positions today. So, in terms of challenges to doing business, current sign code was listed by thirty-six percent of the respondents. Thirty percent cited parking challenges, twenty percent cited rising rents as a challenge, and twenty-five percent reported some kind of minor vandalism. Again, where some of these challenges were raised, city staff was excellent in going out and reaching to these businesses, and trying to understand what the issues were, and working towards resolution where possible. So, what we did learn is twenty-seven percent of these businesses were aware of Longmont EDP services, and twenty-seven percent reported not feeling valued by Longmont leadership. Of course, when we saw that, we reached out to those businesses and connected with them in some way. I think the low awareness of Longmont EDP services is somewhat driven by the fact that they were formerly leggy services under the city, then Longmont Area Economic Council, and we have recently rebranded, so I think there may be a little bit of confusion at this point. But it certainly is an area where we need to invest in getting broader marketing for our services, and, so that will be something that we look at in our 2017 budgeting. So, any questions from anyone? And again, I want to thank the existing business survey team for taking this on, and for the city, for their great responsiveness around these surveys.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I want to thank you both for a really good presentation. I thought it was succinct, but it was also, gave us lots of good information. And I want to really thank you for including local businesses and small businesses, because they really are the driving fours in town. And we need to hear how many jobs there are, and what their needs are, and, and also for starting the Local Business Advisory, or the, the Small Business Advisory Board, that we met with the other day. That's a, I thought that was a very positive meeting, and we get to hear what they want, and, and they get to hear what our perspective is, and that's enormously helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, we have the proclamation. Jessica Erickson, is she here? Okay. So, Wendy Nessinger, and Janine Lettingham will probably accept this. It's proclamation designating August twenty-third, 2016, as Existing Business Volunteer Recognition Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the Volunteers of Longmont Economic Development Partnership Existing Business Volunteer Committee, in partnership with the City of Longmont, have been conducting outreach to Longmont's primary businesses for the last twenty-six years, and this year began conducting outreach to local businesses, and whereas this outreach includes contacting all the Longmont's primary employees, employers, and a subset of Longmont's local businesses on an annual basis to identify trends, gather strategies, intelligence, address concerns, address concerns, identify new opportunities, and offer the support of the Longmont EDP, and the City of Longmont, and our Advanced Longmont Partnership Organization, and whereas the information gathered annually by the Existing Business Volunteer Committee is critical to the Longmont EDPs and the City of Longmont's effort to keep the local economy strong, and whereas the well-being and growth of Longmont's primary employers and local businesses are critical to the economy of Longmont area, and whereas when our existing businesses do well, it benefits the community through a job creation, local expenditures, taxes to support community services, and the creation of a culture and character unique to Longmont. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, where the virtue authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim August twenty-third, 2016, as Existing Business Volunteer Recognition Day in Longmont, and invite all to help honor our volunteers. So, thank you again from the City Council, and myself, for helping our business community by volunteering.
These are our wonderful volunteers, some of our wonderful volunteers. Wendy, shake his hand.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, my turn. Okay, here we go. Do one more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have first call publicly invited to be heard, Paula Nelson. Excuse me, Paula Nelson. Sorry.
My apologies if I seem a bit nervous. I have brain damage, which presents mostly as an anxiety disorder. It's the result of inadequate Medicare, medical care, which left me in a chronic hypoxic state from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and nine. I had Cover Colorado. It was a very progressive program for those who were unable to afford or even get health insurance because of pre-existing conditions, but still, I had difficulty finding providers that would accept their payment schedule. Brain damage was finally diagnosed in two thousand and six, and finally, serious nighttime hypoxia was diagnosed in two thousand and nine. Since I now use nighttime oxygen, there's been some improvement in my condition, so I guess I take Amendment sixty-nine very seriously. Does anyone else here remember the disinformation campaign by a so-called nonprofit that helped to defeat the City Fiber Optic Initiative the first time around? It was funded by those who had a lot to lose in the broadband business. What defeated this campaign the second time around was an educated electorate. Just as next light attracts business to Longmont, Colorado's single-payer healthcare will do the same. It will bring freedom to startups, and allow them to attract experienced personnel without the fear of losing their healthcare plans. Has the council examined the funding and background of the organizations opposing Colorado Care? I spent a few hours today looking into Colorado Health Institute and its affiliates. Although there are clearly a lot of good people involved, who are trying to make the best and work within the existing system, there are a lot of those people that will lose their jobs if Amendment sixty-nine is passed, and some of them stand to lose a lot more, as they are affiliated with insurance companies, HMOs, and for-profit healthcare institutions. They have an interest in serving the status quo, and I gave you a copy of my personal research. My idea, did it all by myself. Now, we can't wait for a second chance here. The health of future generations is at stake. Monopolies are forming in the healthcare market, rates are rising rapidly, and we need the strength of a single-payer system to fight abuse by Big Pharma, such as the four-hundred-dollar EpiPen. Families should not, also not have to choose between an expensive co-pay for a sick child and making the rent or a mortgage payment. We have the power to change an abusive system that now provides the lowest level of healthcare in any of the developed countries of the world, while paying the highest cost for it. I believe the City Council should take no position pro or con on Amendment sixty-nine. Instead, please resolve to encourage voters to educate themselves, sponsor public debate, encourage people to do their personal numbers on the Colorado Care website.
Thank you, Paula. I appreciate that, dear.
One sentence?
Okay, finish your one sentence.
I ask the council to give us an educated electorate, because that is the best way to preserve democracy.
Thank you. No clapping. Jeffrey Dolman.
I kind of guessed that's where you were going. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Jeff Dolman, and I am here to oppose your resolution to oppose the passage of Amendment sixty-nine, Colorado Care. I'm most concerned that a council vote to oppose, no matter how well researched, no matter how well and intended, is going to have the result of being a de facto endorsement of, of the current system, which is broken, which is profit-driven, and it's serving Coloradans very poorly. We have more than a million folks in Colorado who are either uninsured, that's about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, or underinsured, which is about eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. What underinsured means is that, is that they are basically one, one disaster away from having to, to declare bankruptcy. Medical bankruptcy is a uniquely American phenomenon. And in that case, they're unable to, to afford their deductibles, so they do have insurance, they just can't use it for anything beyond a cold. So, I respectfully request that council vote to defeat the resolution as it stands, and to take no stand on Amendment sixty-nine, and to recommend that citizens learn as much as possible about the program, as you have in the second section of your resolution. I also ask that you help the citizens of Longmont by providing a forum for providing educational materials and discussions. We would like to partner with you, and be able to provide as many meetings as we can. Other concerns, citizens and I, at Colorado Care, yes, want to be able to provide the information people need, to make a well-informed position on Amendment sixty-nine, Colorado Care. Coloradans for Coloradans receives more than ninety-nine percent of its funding from business enterprises, sixty-two percent of which comes from outside of Colorado. Million dollars comes from Anthem in Ohio, half million comes from Kaiser Permanente Financial Services in California, and four hundred and fifty thousand from United Healthcare in Connecticut. That organization is clearly not Coloradans for Coloradans, and it has much at stake in trying to defeat sixty-nine. Colorado Care, yes, the advocates have received average donations of about a hundred and twenty-five dollars from more than twelve hundred individuals, ninety-four percent of whom are from Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, we don't either clap or applaud or cheer, because then people will get intimidated if they have opposing views. It's kind of our council policy. Bima Mark Bakas?
I would also like to recommend a no vote on the resolution, to recommend a no vote.
Could you also give us your address, please?
Huh?
Could you give us, your naming address for, for the record?
My name is Bima Mark Bakas, and I live at two-one-three-eight Lincoln Street.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to recommend a no vote on your resolution, to recommend a no vote on Amendment sixty-nine, which is Colorado Care. And my main concern for this segment is the money that could be saved with Colorado Care. The City of Longmont itself would save four-point-five million dollars, based on different factors, and the whole state would save up to four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars if Colorado Care was passed by 2019. Colorado citizens will be saving four-point-three billion dollars on out-of-pocket expenses, and two-hundred million dollars on premiums. Three-hundred-and-sixty thousand Coloradans are uninsured, that was already said, and I feel like, as a community, it is important that we help each other out during hard times. I also feel like it's important to state that a lot of people who don't have health insurance wind up being unable to pay their medical bills, and oftentimes, that sort of costs will be brought back to the, to the taxpayer, so it's as if we're already paying for their medical expenses, but with them receiving worse care, or sometimes even no care, sometimes them dying way too soon, or them suffering lifelong conditions. Some people are concerned about their Medicare benefits. However, Medicare Parts A, B, and D will remain intact, and eighty-five percent of Medicare beneficiaries will be saving money based on premium taxes, and most of them will most likely see their dental benefits rise. Colorado Care reduces administration costs by six-point-two billion dollars, and one-point-two billion dollars will be saved by using bulk purchasing power, as well as six-hundred million will be saved by reducing fraud by implementing a single billing system. Thirty-two thousand jobs will be brought to Colorado by taking out-of-state administration and other factors, and bringing it into state. And a majority of Colorado, based on the few polls that have been conducted, about fifty-five percent already support Colorado Care. So, I would recommend not passing a resolution to vote no, or to recommend voting no, on Colorado Care Amendment sixty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Thomas?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Byron Thomas, I'm four-ten Main Street here in Longmont. I've been a resident for about six years here, and I have a business on Fourth and Main here in Longmont that I often ride my bike to. I'm speaking on behalf of Bicycle Longmont tonight. I'm the new president of Bicycle Longmont, so you'll see my face here a little bit more, and I just wanted to literally get in front of you and let you know, there's several new faces on the board with Bicycle Longmont, and we've got a lot of new energy, and we're looking forward to working with the city. We've got, I've had a few meetings with, with Phil, and looking forward to meeting with him more, and seeing what we can do to make bicycle commuting in Longmont a little bit safer. As you know, we've had some, some incidences in Boulder County and in Longmont this year. So, our, our goal is to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. So, with some of the initiatives that you folks have started, and some of the ideas that we have, we'd like to work a little bit closer with the city, and try to get some of these initiatives going. We, I work in Boulder, also have an office in Boulder, and I don't ride to Boulder as much. I don't feel it's as, as safe as it used to be. That's why I love commuting here in Longmont. I feel it's much safer, but I think there's a few steps that we can do to make it a little bit better. Some curb cuts in certain places, more painted, a little bicycle lines and lanes throughout the city would be great, more education, signage. I got a couple examples of just little, the three-foot law rule that League of Bicycle of America really tries to encourage cities to use. These are some things that are fairly, fairly affordable, that's easy for the city to implement very quickly. We have a Monday night and a Wednesday night cruiser ride, and I'd really like to invite the city council members out to get out and see the fun that the community has. It's a very family-orientated ride, a lot of little kids out there, a lot of families, and it's a good way to see Longmont, some of the back streets and alleys that we go through. Some of the community members here have really done a lot of work cleaning up their alleys, and doing some artwork in their alleys, and it's really cool to ride your bike through and check some of that stuff out. Sort of in closing, I just want to say thank you again, and let you know that hopefully you'll see some more really positive members coming into Bicycle Longmont and working with you, and trying to see if we can improve the safety of cycling in Longmont. So, that's it. Just a quick introduction to myself, and let you know that there's some new members in Bicycle Longmont. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bethany Kuner?
Hello. My name is Bethany Kuner. I live at 517 Baker Street in Longmont, and I'm just here wanting to answer any questions and remind the council about the permit issue I was dealing with, where I had requested information about building, remodeling the carriage house on my property, and was told that I was zoned for an accessory dwelling unit, to go ahead and proceed, make changes. I spent a lot of money, I spent a lot of time, and then was told in December that my density requirements for the block were met, and I can't have a permit. And I believe where we are at now is that the only way the accessory dwelling unit could be approved would be for a text amendment to the code, and that they were going to put information in your packet for this evening to look at that. So that's really all I wanted to say was just, you know, to please, I've been working on this for a year and a half with a lot of, you know, yeah, this looks good, go forward, go forward, you know, I borrowed money, I've been paying interest on that loan for over a year now. I have a demolished carriage house in a pile in my backyard, and no permit to build the new carriage house in its place, which the city wanted a new foundation for, and I paid for an engineer to design that. I paid for the barn to be taken down. I've saved a lot of the materials, I could reuse it to preserve the historic nature of it. And without the housing option, the unit that that was going to provide at the top level, I was going to rent that and provide an affordable housing option in Longmont, which we just heard in the building, or the business report is so important, that was going to be paying back that loan. So I'm a little bit in a hard spot, and just hoping that the city can look at it as a grandfathered issue of the carriage house was there prior to the density requirements. And please move forward on that text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Riggi?
Hear that?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Is it working?
Yeah.
Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your kindness. My name is Mary Ann Riggi.
Right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
And a little louder, okay. Usually I'm told to be quiet. Okay? So I'm told I talk too much, so I am a retired speech therapist, so maybe that's why. I teach other people how to talk. I have. I reside at 7021st Avenue in Longmont at Aspen Meadows Apartments, and once again, I'm grateful to be living there for all the help that I've gotten from so many people from different agencies and churches and friends who've helped me to move in there. So I was homeless before, and I like to call it without a residence, but I already called it homeless. And I'd like to speak for Ed, who is a homeless man. He told me to call him homeless, because that's what he is. And I'd like to speak for him first, and I don't know how much I'm going to get in, but he has offered to volunteer, not for pay, to volunteer to help keep the Agape Center open. And he wasn't able to get me the list tonight, but he offered to get a list of people that he knows that would also volunteer, so that they could do work to show that they are hard-working people, and that they could help keep the center open this fall and winter, and hopefully into next year, whatever they can do. And I understand there's a fundraiser coming up, and I'd like to help too, because I like to do volunteer work and have done it. And right now, I ride my scooter around, and I like to, because it's summer and I can do it. I don't have a vehicle yet. My son and I are hoping to get a used truck together, so we can have a vehicle to share. And what I do is ride my scooter around to the corners up near where I live, North Main Street, and distribute the information cards that are made here in the civic building. And I've gotten several, quite a few, and handed them out to homeless people on the streets, and many of them are very grateful. And what else I've done as a volunteer, and I hope to work again, so I hope to get good references again, because Christina already gave me references from the Hope program, and to get this information to the homeless, and they are already given the cards by people that drive the Hope van. So to get them information about when and where the food is distributed, every night, every night of the week, except one when they have a big dinner for the homeless. I believe it's at the church called Heart of Longmont where they have it. But I'm not going to get to say everything I want to say, I never do. But my son is starting a nonprofit, and I am too, and we've been working at it, putting information into our laptops, and we need to have a vehicle or two vehicles to get our work done. And we are planning to go to the Chamber of Commerce workshop on the 30th to see what else we need to do to get our nonprofit started. Thank you. Have a nice evening. Take care.
Thank you. James Johnson?
My name is James Johnston, and currently I live at the Super 8 motel. We have still not been able to find a house. One of the questions I wanted to ask tonight is, what do you call affordable housing? We don't have any affordable housing for people that's low income, even some of the middle income cannot afford some of the housing around here. But still, you say you belong in Longmont, and so I would like to know exactly what affordable is, that I can see if I can afford it. But so far, I haven't been able to. And the rent has been just going up and up and up. I talked to a lady, and she said that she had to move out, because the landlord was going to raise it to 1,200, and she told him, gave him so much notice, he says, "Well, that's all right, because I'm raising it to 1,800 as soon as you move out." And so, you know, things like this. And I would just like to know what we can do about affordable housing in Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgetta Johnston?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Georgetta Johnston, and I'm at the Super 8 too, but we have a post office box because of four months of being moved from our apartment. But we've been checking with all the housing. We also went and seen about maybe buying if we can't do rent, but we can't continue living up there, because that's expensive. It's been since July 5th that we've been there. So I'm also thinking we've got to get more affordable housing. And I know they're building different places, but nobody knows about who's over it, because I've talked to, we've talked to different people. So I feel like this is a good city, and you people are in the place of caring about us all and helping this city to be a good place to live, not to have to move out, because we've lived here and we like it here, and for many, 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 many years. And so I'm praying that things are going to start getting better, is what I'm thinking. And this is very interesting, we keep coming off and on, and right now, we're kind of, unless you go through these issues, I guess you really don't care about the people. And everywhere on the block, it seems like everybody's begging, which is not really attractive. We're in the Super 8, and we meet all these nice people, they come here to visit, and they go, "What is all this pan-hounding about?" So, you know, I'm praying for you, Lord bless you, and I feel like some way, somehow, this has all got to work out for good. Lord bless you, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Steve Zabo?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Zabo, and I reside at 8449 North 79th Street, Longmont. This is a brief summary of a letter I sent City Council and some additional information. I'm speaking on this item so the public is aware of this issue. My wife and I are the owners of the Family Garden, which is a nonprofit here in Longmont. I was thinking of installing solar panels, but decided to look at electric rates first. I was surprised to see that there is an additional service fee for solar self-generators, which is $12 higher than the residential rate. Also, the kilowatt rate for self-generators is not the same as the residential rate. I believe that both of these rates are discriminatory and need to be changed in order to comply with Colorado's net metering law. The additional $12 customer charge is confusing, and it discourages solar installations. My first thought that this was an oversight, and Longmont Power wasn't aware of the net metering law. But Longmont Power told me that their additional charge to solar customers was justified, and I would need to take legal action, but I don't want to take legal action. Here is some important information for the public to consider. The city of Fort Collins, Loveland, and Estes Park also get their power from Platt River Power Authority, but do not add an additional fee for their customers who self-generate with solar. The net metering law also applies to all rural electric co-ops in Colorado, who are also nonprofits, and none charge their customers who self-generate with solar. In a study by the Brookings Institute, they state, "Net metering frequently benefits all ratepayers when all costs and benefits are accounted for." So what does the accumulating national literature on costs and benefits of net metering say? Increasingly, it concludes, whether conducted by PUCs, national labs, or academics, that the economic benefits of net metering actually outweigh the cost and impose no significant cost increase for non-solar customers. Far from a net cost, net metering is, in most cases, a net benefit for the utility and for the non-solar ratepayers. Other examples of the value of solar are in these charts provided by the city of Austin and the state of Minnesota. Austin values solar at 13 cents per kilowatt hour, and Minnesota at 14 cents per kilowatt hour. Longmont Power does a great job managing their grid, and their rates are the lowest in the state, but given the value of solar, we should be thinking of ways to encourage clean energy production versus discouraging it. We all know that fossil fuels are not here forever, and when they're gone, they're not coming back. So we need to move forward more aggressively with clean energy solutions to create jobs and protect our environment and human health. I strongly urge the Longmont City Council to investigate this issue by talking with their partners at Fort Collins, Loveland, and Estes Park, and have the city attorney examine the net metering statute. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, this isn't a question-and-answer forum, so we... Okay. But yeah, thanks, Eve, for the information. And we are considering it all. Barry Carlin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dr. Barry Carlin. I'm a volunteer working in behalf of Amendment 69 in Colorado Care. I bet you all felt heart-warm to see these 20 or so Chinese students visiting us. When I was a student at UCLA back in early 1950s, I studied China's healthcare system and took some of those insights with me when USAID sent me to Thailand in 1959, where I spent six years. And we were able to develop a healthcare system in Thailand, which is suitable for their history, their culture. It's very successful. 800,000 community health volunteers are the backbone of Thailand's system. And since then, I've worked throughout the world with the World Health Organization, UNICEF, and others, developing healthcare systems. I know developing healthcare systems is complicated and can be a little threatening to people who depend on existing healthcare. But given the needs here in Colorado and the United States, it's time for us to take a hard look at how we can improve our healthcare system and pioneer a new healthcare system for the United States, just as Saskatchewan Province in Canada pioneered their national healthcare system. Our history and culture offers proper suspicion about big government. None of us really want to be controlled by big government. And one of the beauties of healthcare Colorado is that it would not be a governmental system, although it is specifically permitted under the Affordable Care Act. It would be in the form of a statewide healthcare cooperative, nonprofit, nongovernmental. And I would like to encourage you to recognize that this is the way to go, to take the profit out of healthcare. People's sickness shouldn't be viewed as an opportunity to make a profit. Healthcare should be our human right, and it's becoming a human right all over the world. It's time for Colorado to see that, to recognize that, and have the courage to try something new. Our plan has been very carefully studied by leading economists, and I think we can say with confidence that this would be a blessing to the people of Colorado. So thank you for your kind indulgence.
Thank you. Adam Grif? No, excuse me, Bill Semple. Excuse me.
Mayor Combs, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bill Semple. I live at 2030 Floral Drive, just down the street in Boulder. And coming here, I wanted to say a few things from my perspective. I've been a part of the group of Colorado citizens that have been developing Colorado Care over the last eight years, and that's culminating in a citizens' initiative that is on the ballot this November. And to speak to the need and the solution that Colorado Care offers. The need is, we spend almost twice as much per person for healthcare in this country, almost twice as much, and we have poorer outcomes. We spend too much, and we're not getting good outcomes, despite having some of the best healthcare providers that the world has to offer. The Institute of Medicine, a couple of years ago, did a study that showed that we waste $750 billion that we spend unnecessarily in healthcare. $750 billion, that's more than we spent on K-12 education, that's more than we spent on our military, and that's money that's wasted. So can we do something better than waste that much money? Yes, we can, and we need to. As was mentioned, one out of four Coloradans are uninsured or underinsured, one out of four. The majority of bankruptcies are due to medical care. That's unnecessary. We don't have to do that. When we go to vote in this November's election, the first sentence that we see for Amendment 69, Colorado Care, is going to say, "Shall we raise taxes by $25 billion?" It does say that, and yes, it will. What it doesn't say, and we need to understand, is that it will replace $30 billion in current premiums and out-of-pocket expenses. It's a $5 billion savings. So with Colorado Care, we have a historic opportunity. We can cover every resident of the state of Colorado. There'll be no medically-driven bankruptcies, and we'll save $5 billion a year, and perhaps most important, we'll take local control over how we spend our healthcare dollars. So I appreciate this opportunity and encourage you to continue educating the citizens of Longmont about this historic opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Adam Grif?
Thank you. My name is Adam J. Grif, Ph.D., and I live at 1537 Euclid Circle in Lafayette, one of those other L-towns up the road. Just want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me to speak, and also for concerning Colorado Care Amendment 69. And I figured, we've heard lots of stories today on how it's affecting people, and what I wanted to bring up is more the numbers specific to the city and how it affects the city. And so I have an op-ed piece that was in today's paper, and I spoke with many of the council members, and I appreciate your time discussing that. And I just want to say, some of the great things from speaking with you was the issues of, or the support that many of the council members expressed around this, as well as the concerns. And the concerns often came around education and not having facts about different parts of it. So I'm just going to unfortunately geek out a little bit and give you a few numbers, so we have those on the record. So the city currently spends, or has a budget of $64 million for employee costs, and that will result in a $4.3 million cost for paying for Colorado Care from the city's end. The important part there is... The important part there is, the city currently spends $8.8 million paying those same insurance policies through corporations currently. So that results in a $4.6 million savings, just on that one example. The other thing to note is, 83% of the city employees currently choose an HMO plan. And the result of that is, they have very restricted choices on which doctors they can choose and go with, versus Colorado Care will open it up to all the doctors in the area. Some other things to sort of make on the personal level for the members of the city is that there's 817 employees currently that are full-time that make up that 8.8 million, 8.88 million. And so to sort of break that down in a way that makes sense, and sorry, also 1.38 million of premiums that are paid by those employees. So the end result of that is, the city's currently paying ten, almost $11,000 per employee, and then the employees are paying $1,689 themselves to cover that. And important in this is, with those numbers and those savings, there's 785 part-time employees that are currently not covered at all by the city, that will then actually be covered through those same numbers. So saving a lot of money and even covering twice the number of people, and those are the part-time employees. I'll sort of skip ahead a bit, but the one example is, for a median employee in Colorado, currently, the employer spends $1,000, a little over that, and $400 a month is what the employer pays, or the employee pays, sorry. And just to sort of give you an idea, I'll jump ahead, but number-wise, those people would actually drop to $203 a month is what they'd be paying, and the employer 405. So in general, employers will save money. So I just want to thank the council for letting me speak, and also for educating the local citizenry. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much. All right, that ends the first call. Public invited to be heard. So we'll move on to...
Consent. Ready for your consent agenda?
Yeah.
First item of my consent is Ordinance 201655, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. Public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for September 13. Item 8B is Ordinance 201656, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 13.20 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Public Lands. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for September 13. Item 8C is Ordinance 201657, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 4.72.045 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Economic Development Incentive Payments, Primary Job Creation. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for September 13. Item 8D is Resolution 201683, approving the 2016 Intergovernmental Agreement for Bus Service Between the City of Fort Collins and the City of Longmont. Item 8E is Resolution 201684, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City and Boulder County for Acceptance of Recyclables at the Boulder County Recycling Center. Item 8F has been removed from your agenda. Item 8G is Resolution 201686, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City and the State of Colorado, Department of Public Safety, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for an Emergency Management Program Performance Grant. Item 8H is, there are two resolutions. The first one is Resolution 201687, urging Longmont citizens to vote yes on the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District funding reauthorization on the November 8, 2016 statewide general election ballot. And the second one is Resolution 201688, urging Longmont citizens to vote no on Amendment 69 concerning establishment of a statewide healthcare system on the November 8, 2016 statewide general election ballot. And Item 8I is ratify the U.S. 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition Annual Policy Statement. Were we going to pull? The staff does not need to pull anything.
Okay. I guess I would like to pull Item H, just Item 2. I don't need to pull 1 or I. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to pull both items on 8H.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I'll amend my original to pull everything. So if I make that motion, you'll use second. Okay. Let's... So that gets pulled table to the next part. Now we need to... Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Just recalling entire 8H. Councilmember Santos?
I was confused there for a minute. We were making motions on moving items when we just requested. So I move the consent agenda minus Item 8H, which includes the two items.
Okay, that's been moved in second. Let's vote on the consent agenda minus Item H. And that passes 5 to 0 with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Finley absent.
Mayor Combs, your next item is the second reading, Ordinance 201654, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. Staff does not have a formal staff presentation on this. You received one at first reading on this.
Right, okay. All right, if there's no questions from council on this, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-54. Is there any from the public who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2016-54. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I move Ordinance 201654.
All right, let's move in second, and let's vote. And that passes 5 to 0 with Councilmember Bagley and Finley absent.
Mayor Combs, the next item would be the resolutions that you pulled from Consent Agenda, and I believe Sandy Seder will start this off.
Mayor Combs, members of council, Sandy Seder, Assistant City Manager. In front of you have two different resolutions discussing different ballot issues that are coming up on the November ballot. One of them is to support the SCFD funding, of which we have lots of local arts folks, including our museum, that receive funding from that. This is the reauthorization of that ballot issue. And then the other one, as you've heard a lot about already, is Amendment 69. I do want to just kind of lay out a little bit about why that's even in front of you in the first place. Similar to legislative bills that you see throughout the year, this is one of those that our HR staff and our risk staff came to me and said, "This is going to create some, certainly some additional works, additional considerations, some additional costs for the city as an employer." So I want to be clear that there is no one from staff saying that we shouldn't have healthcare for everybody, and that healthcare isn't vitally important, because it is. The staff position on this, as you have seen in the resolution itself, is just that there's some uncertainty in what this is going to look like. The costs, although correct, you know, what I think Mr. Grifft was saying was correct, the estimates are that we'll be paying less for healthcare as we go. The point in which that happens and exactly how that happens is somewhat unknown, I would say. The first thing that happens upon an election is that the trustees are then voted in by the legislature, and so it's just, there's not enough details for our HR folks necessarily to feel that this is a good step in the right direction for the city as an employer, not as a community, not as a nation, but as an employer. We currently choose our healthcare providers. We spend a great deal of time making sure we have a really good benefit package for our employees, and that is the reason that it's in front of you today.
Yeah. Well, I guess I think, I was kind of confused on why this wouldn't be two separate resolutions, so you could have pulled them separately, but that's beside the point now at this point. So I understand why it's been put on there. You know, I think we as council, you know, we try to do what's best for staff, but our first obligation is to do what's best for the most of the people, the city of Longmont. So that's what we have to struggle with.
Understood, absolutely.
Councilmember Moore?
Are we discussing the resolutions now? I'm actually uncomfortable with recommending resolutions to support or not support a direct vote of the citizens of the state, of the community in the state. It feels a lot like lobbying, and that's something that council generally doesn't do on any of their own ballot initiatives. And the ballot language is so confusing and so lacking in detail, and now I'm talking about 88 now, but I just don't feel like council should be taking a position on any of these statewide ballot issues and recommending on how people should vote. And with that said, I would recommend we take a neutral position on both of those resolutions.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Well, I can understand that sentiment regarding the SCFD authorization. I believe that has a direct cause and effect to the museum. Amendment 69, I see as confusing, and I would agree that things of that nature, it's to ask residents to vote one way or another, as individuals we can, not taking a city position, which I intend to. And that would be a no. But with the SCFD, I would recommend that we support that.
I guess I kind of agree with Gabe, is I see a strong reason to support the SCFD resolution, but to basically stay neutral on the second resolution for Amendment 69 is kind of my preference. Councilmember Joan? Or Peck, excuse me. Sorry.
That's fine. I know. Thank you. I take the position, first of all, Councilman Moore, was that a motion you made? Okay, then I second that.
Yeah, it hasn't been seconded.
Okay. Then I second it. So I agree. I don't think that we should be lobbying citizens to vote one way or the other, but I do think that we should encourage everybody to be educated on both of these. There are tons of information on both of them. As personal, as an elected official, the thing that I do like about Amendment 69 is the mental health component, because I don't see anybody out there addressing that at all. So just as a resident also, I like that component really well. So I second the amendment and don't think we should take a position on any of these, either of these.
Councilor Christiansen?
Or Polly.
I started something here, didn't I?
Mayor Dennis. So we have, I agree with both Councilman Moore and also Councilman Santos. I feel very uncomfortable kind of recommending that citizens vote a certain way, because I feel like that's an odd thing for us to do, because it's their vote. But I do understand that, as Councilman Santos said, these are issues that do affect the city financially. We get quite a bit of funding from the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, and we also benefit enormously from it. That's been a big economic issue, and I remember as a child when there was no funding like this. And the difference is night and day. And so I personally am very much in support of that, and I would urge the citizens to vote too, if we decide to do that. But on Amendment 69, I think it would be best for us to remain neutral. It's very, very complex. I would advise people to check out the draft of the Blue Book, and also to check out the Colorado Care website, and educate yourself about this. This is a very complicated issue. On a personal basis, when I was in high school, my aunt died because she was sent home from the hospital because her insurance ran out. She died the next day. This is a completely repulsive kind of situation that we have in this country, in healthcare. We've got to choose, we've got to start a different path. And I realize that this would be, this is going to be very complicated. But in Canada, the way they got started with national healthcare was for one state or province in Canada to have the courage to do it. And Colorado can do that. We have a lot of smart people and a lot of doctors and other very intelligent people have been working on this for a number of years. And I realize it will be very difficult for the whole state to do this. It'll be like trying to institute a whole new software system, which we've just gotten through doing, which is, you know, it's very difficult. But I would suggest people just educate themselves on this and make a good choice for your children's future and for yourself.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Sandy, can you tell us, I mean, we've been, council's been taking positions on state ballot measures for quite some time. How did, what was the rationale to bring these two to council, besides the 69, which could be a financial detriment to the city as an employer?
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Santos, the reason that we brought these today was because that I received information from staff that these would affect the city organization one way positively, one way potentially negatively. And so that's the only reason that these are here. We don't take ballot issues every year. In fact, we don't take them usually every other year. We take them when there is some sort of significant impact that may be felt by the organization.
All right, it's my recollection, especially for the SCFD. Again, that has a direct benefit to the museum, and that reauthorization, while the Longmont Museum may be in a different tier than what we would like, it's still the recommendation from not only the museum, but also the, those that are, that represent Longmont in the Boulder County area for the SCFD funding, that to keep, to basically support this reauthorization. I remember this coming back some time ago, and them asking us for that, to support that reauthorization. So I would really hope, I know there's a motion to do both, and I will vote no on both. Usually, we would take these one at a time, which that way, if it fails, it kills both of them. So I would hope that the council members that made the motion in the second would break these two into two separate votes.
Well, that was kind of what I was trying to do to begin with, but, you know, just speaking of, you know, my personal experience, and I'm not going to weigh in here, but the administrative cost of healthcare is really broken with large employers. I mean, we just spent the whole weekend, all four partners, working together to fill up, basically, the lookback for, I don't know, 23 payrolls, when you have 100 people and you've changed payroll systems between that, and you've got to enter all of this payroll data for each payroll, number of hours worked, and total pay, and, I mean, it was just a horrific job. I mean, we're spending more on administrative cost on this ESR, Employee Shared Responsibility, than we are paying for the, the administrative cost is equal or higher than the cost of the health insurance. I mean, it's incredible. It's mind-boggling. I mean, it's broken. It really is broken. So, you know, that's like this personal, that's not my mayor's hat, but this is a business person, I can tell you, it's, what we have right now is not working. And if you get rid of the administrative cost, it has to logically lower the cost of healthcare, because that's a huge part of it. You know, I used to go to the doctor, get a physical, and I'd spend maybe 12 minutes with the doctor, they'd ask you a few questions, they send you down to get your blood and urine, and you'd be out of there like that. And, you know, for the next seven months, you'd be getting all these contacts and responses back from the clinic and the insurance company, who's going to pay? And seven months later, that 12-minute doctor visit had generated about 40 hours of billing stuff to figure out that you now owe $152. I mean, something's wrong with our healthcare system, so I think we all realize that. Whether this is the solution or not, I don't know. But I'm going to, like, I'm going to encourage everybody to educate yourself as much as you can, and, you know, it's your responsibility to get educated and vote how you seem fit, and that's what I'm going to encourage everybody to do. I'm not going to make a recommendation on how to vote. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would just like to explain my position on why the mental health component struck me and why I really liked it, was because, looking at our city, one of our huge issues, both in Boulder County and the state of Colorado, is homelessness linked to mental health...
both in Boulder County and, and the state of Colorado, is homelessness linked to mental health, linked to incarceration. So I went to, did a little work on the Department of Corrections, DOC, and they have for the 2015-2016 budget thirteen, no, I'm sorry, it's eighteen million dollars for fifteen thousand five hundred inmates. That comes to a little over ninety, about ninety-seven dollars a month in a premium. That's because they're self-insured, and that covers everything from operations to therapy for addiction. And my thought was, why don't, because the stats say that fifty-five percent of incarcerated males are there because of mental health reasons, severe depression and bipolar. Seventy percent of incarcerated females are there for severe depression and bipolar. Why don't we do this on the front end instead of the back end? If these people had some kind of health insurance, if we had some way for therapists and psychiatric facilities and hospitals like we used to have before nineteen eighty-four, then perhaps our inmates would be reduced, our jail costs. So I know the government knows that being self-insured is the, the most efficient way to go, because they do it. They do it with the DOC and they do it with VA. So I applaud and I'm very proud of Colorado that we have people in our state that attack problems like this and come up with solutions. So this is, this is a solution. Is it perfect? No, nothing's perfect. But it is, it is, it's an effort. And I'm really proud that, that we are a state that are trying to do this. Thank you for the effort.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to clarify for Councilmember Santos is that the resolutions were put under one item each. And the same reason I considered for both is that taking a position and recommending how people vote, I want to treat both ballot issues equally, rather than say, well, one's good and one's not. I just think the neutral position on both is where I am thinking I'm gonna, I know I'm going to vote that way. And in both of these ballot initiatives, there's still the public education component that really has not been done well. I read the ballot language a couple of times, and I just thought, well, there's no deadlines, there's no accountability, there's no, I mean, it's like, trust me, trust me. When I hear that, I don't trust. And I think that's, while one's a continuation of the existing tax, I don't see that we should, or I don't think, and I'm not going to treat them differently based on my opinion that this is, we shouldn't be recommending for how people should vote. So that's a little more background for you. If they'd been on separate items, then we would have taken them separately.
Mayor Coombs, just to clarify also, just to clarify, there have been times in which the council has come up with that position as well. There have been times where the council has taken positions. There have been times when the council has decided to take neutral positions on all state ballot issues as well. That has happened, at least in my ten years here.
Yes, I remember several council meetings where that's happened before. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. But, yeah, and Councilmember Moore, I get, I really get that reasoning, except that we have two different resolutions. So if that's the case, then from now on, those types of, for Senate bills and House bills, they need to be done individually. Because then a member of council can say, you know, we're just going to do what, on all of them. And I don't think that's fair to each individual resolution. So, I mean, if, if there's five resolutions, I mean, five resolutions in support of HBX-whatever two thousand sixteen, and a council member makes that motion, I mean, and there are some in there that might be, you know, beneficial to the city of Longmont. And if it, you know, if we go neutral or vote no, they all go down. So I'm not going to beat this anymore, but I think from now on, those resolutions regarding supporter, favor, opposition, support, neutral, whatever, needs to become their own separate items on the consent agenda. These are, but under one and two. But if we're going to take that type of reasoning, they need to be done individually now.
Just to clarify, ballot resolution, ballot issues are usually brought up as the issue and not in resolution format. So what I'm hearing you say is that you would want me to separate those during the next legislative session? Okay, thanks.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded, let's vote.
This motion is for a neutral position on both.
Yes.
Neutral position on both. Let me read for just a second. Okay.
And that passes four to one with Councilmember Santos standing, or I mean, voting no, descending, and Finley and Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, I just wanted to mention, I really appreciate the conversation around this today. I really appreciated the editorial in the paper. I appreciated the information that I received today.
Well, it all helps getting the education, the public educated.
Exactly.
You know, whether we're right or wrong, at least it gets people talking about it, and hopefully they'll do some of their own research and make some of their own decisions, because we don't always have the right answers.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the bike share program.
Okay, what, can we, like, take a five-minute break?
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we're taking a five-minute break.
Finish our council meeting?
So yeah, about like eighty pounds, no fifty pounds worth of peaches. Peaches coming out of my ears.
You know, we had this item I to ratify the annual thirty-six mayors and commissioners coalition policy statement. Did we skip that?
No. That was a consent.
Okay, it was just a part of it. Okay, got it. Okay, go ahead.
So a completely different issue. Bike share. Bike share addresses a number of these issues in the comprehensive or in the envision Longmont plan that we just completed. So what is bike share? It's really about talking about the idea of short-term rental of bicycles, putting different stations around the city and in different locations that are very key, specifically like park and rides and places where there's a lot of activity such as Village at the Peaks, the hospital area, the civic center, some places like that. So what we're really trying to do is talk about putting these different stations around town for these shorter trips that some people, you know, a little too long to walk, but maybe short enough that you don't have to drive, and grabbing a bike really quick and be able to take that trip is part of that bike share system. There's a couple of different ways that this works. Well, there's also recreational abilities too, so we've put some along the trail system so that when people come visit our town and instead of wanting to just walk the trail, maybe be able to pick up a bike and bike the trail as well. So there's some opportunities there that we're looking at. There's a couple of different ways that these work. There's the ones that you've probably seen in Denver and maybe Boulder that have the kiosks where you use your credit card to get a bike off the kiosk system there. There's also one others, there's a couple others, but one other that we're looking at specifically is more of a mobile app situation where you have your phone and you go up to a bike, type in the bike number. You will have to be a member, so you can join on your cellphone as well. So there's some other intricacies here that we're looking at as far as how easy is it to get a bike from these different systems. There's also some bike share systems that have a broad range of bikes, so it's not just the two-wheelers, but it's also the three-wheelers. There's a couple that have hand bikes too, so that people with disabilities could also use the bike, or people who aren't very comfortable on a two-wheel bike can use the bike system as well. So we're looking at a bunch of different options. There's also bike systems that have leasing versus buying options. So the city would lease the bikes and then there are ones where we'd have to buy the whole system. So we're looking at a bunch of different options and we're hearing from different companies on those. So just want to let you know kind of where we are in the process and what's been going on. And we're really looking to bring you more details at a future date, but at this point, we're really kind of getting or looking for the council's general approval to kind of move forward and pursue the bike share option for the city. Thank you. Are there any questions to?
Councilmember Beck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think this is a great idea. I'm all for it. Especially for the first-last-mile connections, that's very important. Especially if you had one like at the Kaufman Transit Station. The other place that I would love to see a bike share is out in Harvest Junction. We have absolutely no local transportation out there at all. And we need to get, we need to bring that part of the city into our multimodal plan. So my recommendation is let's look into it and do it. Is there, do you have any costs associated with this yet?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Beck, we do have, we are looking at spending no more than $20,000 to start the program going. And then with that, we're hoping to, all the bike share systems use a sponsorship system where they start going out to the different local businesses and looking for sponsorships to grow the system. So the $20,000 basically gets us kind of two stations to start, and so those would be on city, probably be on city properties to start. And then what we've heard is that they, you know, then the company would go out and solicit for sponsorships, and we try to grow the system from there. But having that city kind of emphasis behind that gets more motivation for the sponsorships.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Who would be setting up, in general, do you think it would be cheaper to lease the bikes or to buy the bikes?
Mayor Coombs.
Well, the other questions I have are, who would be maintaining the bikes? And who would set up the bike racks and payment system and administer that?
Let me repeat your first question, I'm sorry, I just.
Who would be maintaining the bikes? And who would be setting up the bike racks, which are kind of expensive? And who would be maintaining them and also collecting the money and that sort of stuff?
Councilmember Christiansen. What we really look at, we're looking at the leasing and the buying piece and that there, right now, we're trying to evaluate which one is more efficient for us. Either way, though, leasing or buying the bikes, there's a component of maintenance that the company provides under both of those contracts. So either way, we get the maintenance piece. But we are trying to evaluate whether it does make more sense for the leasing piece of it or if it makes more sense to buy. The buying piece seems to be something where you buy the bikes and you keep them for six or seven or eight years, like the city of Boulder and the city of Denver are doing right now. So they're kind of, now they're going to need to buy another set of bicycles. The other piece of it is that the leasing, you have to pay every year, but the bicycles rotate out every three years. So the company automatically replaces that your system every three years. So you're up with the most recent technology or the highest level of technology every three years. Sorry, a long-winded answer, but.
Would it be possible to get anybody, I mean, we could ask people if they would like to donate some bikes? You know, I'm just thinking, how we could make this, get more community involvement and make it a little less expensive too.
Councilmember Christiansen, we did ask about that as well because we have a number of employee bike share bikes that we were talking about maybe putting into the system. Unfortunately, neither one of the companies that have really been kind of the big players in this, they bring their own bikes to the system and they're pretty key on what it takes to maintain those bikes. And so they don't like to bring other bikes into the system. However, the leased bikes, every three years when those rotate out, they volunteer, or they basically donate the bikes that are now no longer in use to the community. So that's another positive piece of that.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. On that point, Phil, we have the fire department and I remember Buzz Feldman and now back Longmont doesn't. They refurbish bicycles for kids. And I know these are a little bit bigger, but perhaps if we were to do that, they could provide those bikes to be refurbished for adults. I would also agree with Councilmember Beck that, you know, Harvest Junction would be a good place and Village of the, I would say Village of the Peaks as well. I mean, we want high concentration where people are going, you know, places people want, people are going and will actually use them. Perhaps a set here, it's civics, around the civic center complex with the library, civic center here, the justice center, and then of course the, that also, whether it's here at civic center or within the core of the central business district, the downtown area, that would be helpful as well. Just some thoughts. I'm not telling you where to place it, but just some ideas about where they might go, it might show a great ridership and provide good numbers. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I felt, is there going to be continuing city requirements to fund this down the road beyond the initial $20,000 or whatever?
Councilmember Moore, there may be. The idea is that the $20,000 initial gets enough sponsorship that maybe the city doesn't have to pay as much. We also, under one scenario, the leasing scenario, we would recoup 93% of whatever people pay into it. So we get that money back, so that would help offset some of those costs as well. So we need to look at some more models of how much that actually is annually based on some other cities. But it's interesting news to try to offset some of these costs in the future, so we don't have to pay the $20,000 every year.
Well, the reason I ask is whether or not we'd be placing future councils under any obligations. If we have contracts or even lease agreements, for example, may extend beyond one council or another. So I just, that would be a concern. I think it's a great idea, but with, I don't mean a great idea, but, I mean, the second part of that would be, with two stations, you're kind of basically out and back to the same station or out between two stations. And I'm not, how much is that going to provide adequate mobility for people to actually get a benefit from it?
Councilmember Moore, the idea is that the city will buy up the two stations, but that the program wouldn't start until you had more stations and more sponsorship come into the city. So we're really looking at starting with actually about 10 stations with five bikes each. And so that's the ideal starting piece of this. And there's different scenarios. We'd like to start early October if we can. I know that's not the best time for bicycling as we're kind of gearing down, literally or figuratively. But we could also start in spring as well, but we'd like to start with those 10, those 10 stations.
So the city portion of, or seed money basically, would be for two stations for the city and they would put in eight more? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. They're looking to expand the network so that it does get use and then it does get the brands that the sponsors buy up. It gets the brand out there on the bicycles.
I think it's paralleling the sponsorship, look at the sponsorship and the additional locations at the same time, but not implementing it until everything's ready to make sure that it actually works as designed. So the key is going to be is working with our local partners, specifically Harvest Junction, Village of the Peaks, where they're willing to sponsor it and make that investment as well.
Okay. How are we going to measure the success of the program?
Well, the companies really do that. So the companies will measure the success and the usage rate and then show us that percentage back that the city would receive. So the company measures that by bicycle, so they can measure it per bike and then per station. And the leasing, the leasing option is a little bit more mobile or mobile, so that when, if a station is not succeeding, it's very easy then to move that station because there's not a lot of infrastructure with that app-based bicycle share program. The buying program does require a little bit more because there's more, like, there's electrical need and there's data need at that location for the card reader. So that's a little harder to move, but it's still one of those things that can be moved if it's not working in that location.
Okay, well, it sounds like a great idea. I'd like to think that we could make it work. But the concern about funding down the road, we need to make sure we address that so we don't obligating future councils to fund this. So I guess that's all I have. So I would move forward with it.
Well, I guess I'll weigh in here. I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, a $20,000 investment is a great investment. I also agree that all the bikes need to be the same because it makes it a lot easier to carry your inventory parts of one freewheel hub and not, you know, seven different brands. And it makes it, you know, makes it much easier and straightforward. And, you know, the things that I see at some of these bike stations is under-inflated tires. So you need to have someone that's going to be inflating tires because that wears the tires out and it makes you work a lot harder. I mean, you shouldn't be riding tires that are designed to be ridden at 60 pounds, at 20 pounds, because it's a lot more work and it wears rubber out. So as long as, you know, I'm sure that they'll figure out all this stuff, but I'd like to see Longmont have these bikes to jump on and go from here to North Town or South Town or whatever. Great, so I'm glad you have the initiative. So I'm fully supportive.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it sounds like we're all supportive, so I would move that we request staff to move forward with, on pursuant to the bike share program for the community.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes five to zero with Councilmember Bagley and Santos absent.
Santos, I'm still right here.
Excuse me. Finley.
She's going to be very upset with me if she thinks she looks like me. I shaved my head. Phil, hold on one second. Now that we got that part out of the way, but as Councilmember Moore said, I would like to, you know, we need to see, well, when this, when time comes, we're going to need to see, members of council are going to need to see the results, the ridership and everything else to see how well this is working. And with that, are we going to provide a little placard of rules and regs of about how to ride your bike? Like not to ride, to dismount in the downtown area, which no one ever does? Stop at stop signs, stop at stoplights?
It can be part of our safety piece on that, so we can use some of our.
There's a bicycle rider that almost didn't make it the other day in front of my car because he was riding on the sidewalk and the light turned green. Luckily, I hesitated because a blurry vision coming off the sidewalk into, you know, into, into traffic where I was going to cross. I mean, it could have been, you know, another one of those unfortunate incidents. Now, I wasn't drinking or on pot at the time, not that I partake and rarely drink, but, you know, hopefully we have some sort of placard and hopefully Bicycle Longmont will now finally help with some of the rules of the road that need to be addressed in the city that has not happened in the last several years. So hopefully we do something like that.
Thanks, Phil. We have one last item.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is the board and commission appointments. You have a number of boards open and we're getting ready to recruit, you're in recruitment, so any of the remaining positions, we will go into that. But we have three boards and three applicants, one for each of the boards. We did not provide you with ballots. If you would like them, I do have some blank sheets of paper over there I can pass out. So the first one is the Board of Adjustment Appeals, and you have one applicant for that.
I think, go ahead.
Well, I was going to move these by acclamation, except for the Board of Environmental Affairs. We interviewed Linda Creek, but we never got any contact.
Withdrew her.
Right. But we interviewed her, but we never received any email from Amy Schmidt. So I would hope that we would re-advertise for Board of Environmental Affairs and appoint Jordan May to Board of Adjustments, some lady named Valerie, Valerie Askit to the General Employment Retirement Pension Board. I don't know who she is, I think I vaguely remember her. You want that one to be a secret ballot? I like that. And, you know, Erin Hutchinson to the Transportation Board and re-advertise for Board of Environmental Affairs. That's the motion I would make. And maybe that Valerie, she was kind of sketchy.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion, it's been seconded. Councilmember Christiansen. Okay.
You have to raise your hands.
You have to raise your hand.
Oh, yeah.
She's over there.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations.
Now it's time for mayor and council comments. So I guess the school board has thrown down a challenge to the city council. Oh, excuse me, I did that again. Time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there any public that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, council members. My name's Peter Schaub, I live at 1602 South Pratt Parkway. I apologize for not being here early enough to get onto public comment at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to speak, I guess at this point, to thank you for your support of the bike share program and moving forward on that. I am a car-carrying member of Boulder B-Cycle. I am a board member of Boulder B-Cycle. I am an attorney and I do pro bono work for Boulder B-Cycle. And I was instrumental in the initial formation of the B-Cycle entity, which was a group put together by Trek, Humana and Crispin Porter Bukowski many years ago. I'm not here on behalf of B-Cycle. I was in communication with a number of the other board members and our executive director. But I felt compelled as a Longmont resident to express my support for this type of program. Also wanted to, I guess, point out some things that staff covered. This is me speaking from my experience over the years, both on the board as a member and then also doing a significant amount of legal work for Boulder B-Cycle. They've already touched on, I think Councilman Beck touched on this, which was, what's the intent of the program? To cover the first and last mile oftentimes is the intent of a program like this, but it's encouraging to hear that there's other things being considered like recreational opportunity. It's not just a multimodal transportation solution for, you know, for transportation, but also for recreation as well. Keep in mind, and this was touched on a little bit, the expansion of the program over time, location of these stations. You need to have dense areas so that there's, you don't end up with a wayward station that gets no use. In terms of the stations, a couple of the things that I was going to speak about were covered. I would encourage staff to continue to look at what these different programs are. I'm not going to sell you on the B-Cycle program, but I would encourage staff and the city council to look at what other programs other communities are having and look for maybe opportunities for members, residents of Longmont who join in this program, have flexibility to maybe utilize other programs. I, for one, live here, but I work in Boulder. What's the user experience on some of these other programs too? Beyond the maintenance issues, it's really the interface with the program itself. So again, thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thanks for staying and speaking. All right, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Jumped the gun. I guess the school board's thrown down a challenge at this pie throwdown at high noon, and they're challenging the city council to a pie fight. So if anybody wants to join in, that's. It's the, yeah, Saturday at noon, throwdown at pie noon.
Downtown.
You wouldn't want to eat this pie. It's made from cream that's past pull date, things like that, you know, so we're not wasting food. But it's more of a charity thing, so, anyway, I just thought I'd let you know that the challenge has been put down to us, so.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Unfortunately, I will be in Milwaukee with the Hispanic elected local officials of the National League of Cities constituents.
You're off the hook.
Yeah, and you know the rifle arm that I have. You know, when you were in that water tank.
We would be on the same team then.
I know, but I would at least get a couple in on you. So I would hope those, the rest of you that are available will be able to, Councilmember Finley, we know is completely out with her knee surgery, so she gets that excuse. The one thing I wanted to bring up, back in late August, I mentioned that I was going on this Hilo trip and Mayor Coombs offered to take my place for a coffee with council on Saturday.
on Saturday. It's my understanding that Councilmember Bagley will not be in town, so we need one more member of council to cover coffee with council. Am I correct, Sandy?
Yeah.
This Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and again, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, no problem.
And I'm sure Councilmember Bagley is greatly appreciative.
And where we having coffee with council?
Red Frog.
Red Frog, okay, got it.
Red Frog. It's over on the south end of Harvest Junction.
Got it. Go get coffied up, then go to a pie fight.
I wish you guys the best. Unfortunately, I'm coming back at 8 o'clock at night, so I'm not going to be able to make it, so, good luck.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to let you know that the Longmont Youth Council is having a fundraiser, several fundraisers, actually, because they want to send four members to the National League of Cities in Pittsburgh in November. So they're going to have a car wash September 2nd at Oil Can Henry's on Pike. No, I'm sorry, that's wrong, Pace. I always get those two P words mixed up. So on Pace, September 2nd, so anybody who can support them, please do. The other thing I want to say is that I saw a little boy today, he really made me nervous. He was sitting on a skateboard in a bike lane, going down the street at a very fast pace. Very dangerous, very dangerous for cars, we couldn't see him, and very dangerous for cyclists who wanted to use that lane. So this is just basically a shout-out to parents and to kids that it's not a good idea to be sitting on skateboards, going down hills on bike lanes.
Councilmember Christensen.
I just wanted to give a word of thanks to all the people from the Health and Human Services Boards who are in the process of spending about two and a half hours every night this week and next interviewing 40 nonprofits around town who help other people and do a very good job of it. And the Health and Human Services analyzes, each one of them sends in a 10-page document, and they analyze them, and then they interview them for 20 minutes, and it's a lot of work, and all those people are very, very dedicated, so I wanted to thank them.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to comment on the Parks and Recreation field tour, field trip last night. It was, it was great. I mean, what Longmont is doing in Parks and Rec and providing park services and revamping like Garden Acres Park, it's really amazing that Longmont citizens support Parks and Rec to this level, and they get a lot of use, and it's time, you know, to continue to support those efforts. The staffing we have to fulfill our needs are pretty amazing. Looking forward to seeing Dickens Park finished. That's going to be a couple of years yet, but we just have a great park system and trail system, a lot of good plans. The flood didn't help us, but, you know, we have to get over that. Second thing, I still would like to have more information on opioid use in Longmont. On our field trip last night, someone came up and left a needle they found in the restroom at Thompson Park. I know that most people probably heard about the Denver Cherry Creek Trail. It's like you can't walk through there without getting stuck with the needle, and we don't want Longmont to get in that situation, but we have to understand the issue overall. It may not, it just seems like these type of issues start at one location in the country, they move to the bigger cities, and they continue to spread out into the smaller communities. And I just want, I just want to make sure we're ahead of all this, and I don't know, I don't have any solutions, but I'd like to at least be able to address the problem that we know about it and we're making plans to deal with it. So it's also a big issue for National League of Cities, because primarily a lot of the large, a lot of the largest cities on the East Coast, and actually the East Coast in general, a lot of, even like New Haven, Connecticut, has one of the huge, has a huge issue with opioid abuse, heroin, illegal, legal drugs, whatever. It doesn't really matter, people get hooked on it and stuff, and they, eventually, a lot of them turn into, go to the, go into the public restroom and shoot up in the bathroom stall. So I don't, I know that that's, it's a bigger issue than necessarily the city, but we need to be, have our eyes open on this.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mayor, one last thing. The mayor and I were invited by the Longmont Economic Development Partnership to meet with Governor Abe of the Nagano Province in Japan. He was the guest over in the city and county of Broomefield, so we crashed their party. We got to meet with the governor at lunch, and then also, as some of you may know, Chino is in the Nagano Prefecture. So there were two gentlemen that were there that were Chino residents and had, they knew Longmont, knew of Longmont, and in fact, one of those gentlemen, they do business with a local brewery here in town. So again, it was a very good meeting. Hopefully, we can encourage a little bit more, not only the sister cities relationship we have with them, with our students, but perhaps an economic development one as well. So that's what we stressed.
You may have heard any comments?
No comments, Mayor Cal.
See, you're trying to get any comments.
No comments, Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.
Do you need another cough drop?